It is the time to start this session on public finance. Mr. Christopher Ho will give us an opening remark and then we will ask questions. Please press the button, Mr. Ho. Thank you, Chairman and members. This session of the special meetings of the Finance Committee will examine the expenditure estimates of the Treasury Branch and related departments. I would like to brief members on the following few points. Estimates of expenditure, the estimated total expenditure of the Treasury Branch and the departments under this purview for two thousand twenty four to five is about eleven point zero five seven billion dollars, a decrease of thirty four point seven one three billion dollars, about seventy six percent over the original estimates of forty five point seven seven billion dollars of last year. This is mainly attributed to a decrease of thirty five point zero billion dollars in the estimated non recurrent expenditure under had one four seven Treasury Branch over the estimates for last year, which covered the non recurrent expenditure on two thousand twenty three consumption voucher scheme, discounting that. The estimated total expenditure, recurrent expenditure of the Treasury Branch and the departments under this purview this year is nine point eight one three billion dollars, an increase of three percent. Key areas of work. There are several key areas of work. First, public finances. We will continue to uphold the principle of keeping the expenditure within the limits of revenues as enshrined in Article one zero seven of the Basic Law, and strive to achieve fiscal balance and avoid deficits. Thereby ensuring resilience and sustainability of our public finances, we are taking steps to implement a comprehensive fiscal consolidation program. So as to restore fiscal balance in a few years' time. As for government expenditure, in order to contain the growth, we will continue to maintain zero growth in the civil service establishments. We will also implement the productivity enhancement program as announced earlier, under which recurrent government expenditure will be cut by one percent in both two thousand twenty four to five and year two thousand twenty five to six. The resources fast saved will be reallocated internally. To further contain the pace of expenditure growth, recurrent government expenditure will be cut by another one percent in two thousand twenty six to seven on the premise that such schemes as CSSA and Social Security Allowance Scheme would not be affected. Bureaus and departments have also reviewed the capital works projects under planning. Projects which are at a comparatively mature stage of planning will continue to be taken forward. For work that are currently at the preliminary planning or conceptual stage, the bureaus or departments concerned will consider the implementation schedule with regard to factors including priority, urgency, and importance. The government also plans to use bonds as one of the financing options for capital works projects. For year two thousand twenty four to five to two thousand twenty eight to nine, we will issue bonds of about ninety five billion to one hundred thirty five billion dollars per annum to raise funds for initiatives such as Northern Metropolis and other infrastructure projects. Proceeds from bond issuance will be used for financing infrastructure and capital works projects but not for meeting our recurrent expenditure. It is expected that the government's debt to GDP ratio will be in the range of about nine to thirteen percent, much lower than most of other advanced economies. Fourth, we would also increase revenue in appropriate areas to complement our measures to cut expenditure with a view to restoring fiscal balance. When considering measures for increasing revenue, we will take into account our actual situation and avoid taking any actions that may affect our economic recovery while maintaining our simple and low tax regime. Based on the affordable users pay principle, in two thousand twenty five to twenty, two thousand twenty four to five budget, the F S proposed to implement a two tiered standard raise regime for salaries tax and tax under personal assessments for taxpayers whose net income exceeding five million dollars. Increase business registration fees, resume the collection of the hotel accommodation tax, and implement the progressive rating system for domestic properties. According to the medium range forecast, upon full implementation of the fiscal consolidation program, the consolidated accounts after taking accounts of the net proceeds from the issuance of bonds will record a surplus starting from year two thousand twenty five to six, while the operating accounts will return to a surplus from year two thousand twenty six and seven onwards. Fiscal reserves will be maintained as a level which is equivalent to approximately eleven, twelve months of government expenditure. Lastly, on international tax cooperation, we will continue to take forward the implementation of the global minimum tax under the BAP's two point O package, promulgated by the OECD and introduced the Hong Kong Minimum Top-Up Tax. The proposals will be implemented starting from two thousand twenty five. We are now carefully studying and considering the views of stakeholders gathered during the consultation period. We expect that legislative proposal will be introduced into legislature in the second half of the year. Chairman, my colleagues and I will be happy to answer any questions from members. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, thank you, Secretary. We only have thirty five minutes left. We can entertain questions from eight members and also the possibly ninth. Mr. Chan Shiu-hung, Dr. Johnny Ng, Mr. Reng Kong, Dr. Wendy Hong, Mr. Kennedy Fok, Edmund Wong, Shanghai Long, Adrian Ho, and the ninth, Mr. Benson Look. For Ms. Carmen Ken, Mrs. Regina Ip, Dr. Kennedy Wong, and Mr. Andrew Lam, it is most likely you will not be able to ask question in this session. Mr. Chan Shiu-hung, thank you. Zero one, one, zero one two and zero one three. Now this year, the government has increased the tobacco duty. Now it is expected that many people would switch to illicit cigarettes. Now according to the government's reply in year two thousand twenty four and five, the enforcement team under the Customs and Exiles Department will be maintained at sixty five officers. Now whenever tobacco duties is raised, illicit cigarette activities would run rampant and the Customs and Exiles Department would have to deploy more manpower to enforce the law. Would that affect other work of the customs like drug detection? Now, zero one three. Now for persons under twenty one charged for illicit cigarettes related offenses. In zero two, it says there were forty nine for year two thousand twenty three, and the other reply says there were sixty five or one hundred sixty five. Does that mean the number of persons arrested and only forty nine were charged? And also, reply, zero one three. Again, persons under twenty one arrested for illicit cigarette offenses in two thousand twenty two, sixty two, two thousand twenty three, one hundred sixty five, an increase of over one time. The government said publicity and education work would be enhanced. Now concerning the increase of number of persons under twenty one arrested for illicit cigarette offenses, what will the C N E D do? Ms. Ho. Ms. Louise Ho, Commissioner of C N A. Thank you, Chairman. Concerning our manpower deployment, our permanent establishment for enforcement of illicit cigarettes, there are sixty five search offices. For other work, we also deployed manpower to support the work on cracking down illicit cigarette activities. Every time when the tobacco duties are raised, we would enforce special operation at boundary control points. For these operations, we would draw manpower from other investigative units to help. Now we would timely review our manpower situation. When necessary, we will seek further funding from the Bureau. Now we don't see that such internal redeployments would affect our other work. For example, in two thousand twenty three, our other work in intellectual property offenses and also drug detection, we have even done better than the previous year. Concerning your point on the number of persons under twenty one arrested, may I submit supplementary information after the meeting? Yes, concerning the difference between the number concerning publicity. In the past one or two years, persons under the age of twenty one involved in illicit cigarette cases mark a rising trend. So we conducted publicity in schools and also through youth groups. In the past, we focused more on disseminating anti-drug messages or anti-piracy message. In the next year, we're going to work more on the illicit cigarette front. Dr. Johnny Ng, thank you. My own question, reply, zero seven eight, cracking down on illicit cigarette activities. Now upstream, you would stop smuggling and at the middle stream, you would crack down on the storage and for the downstream parts, you would tackle selling activities. Now I think you have been very successful as the upper and middle stream, but at the lower end, I think there is much to be done. In the reply, you mentioned you would enhance intelligence sharing among departments. So how is that achieved? Yesterday, there was an announcement from the C N E D. One hundred and seventy nine street peddling cases of illicit cigarettes were prosecuted last year. So on average, um, half a case per day. Now I know that the situation is worse because there are lots of peddling activities in various shops or even flower shops. Ms. Louise Ho, concerning our work at the lower end, there are several aspects. Now when there are dim sum form for ordering illicit cigarettes and also when there are such dim sum forms circulating online, we would gather intelligence and take follow-up actions. Concerning the pamphlets for selling illicit cigarettes, the telephone numbers involved and also social media accounts suspected to be used for selling illicit cigarettes. For these cases, we would notify the telecommunications networks services provider and also the social media platform manager to have those telephone numbers removed and the accounts suspended. In the past, we focused more on the upstream parts that is intelligence gathering and international collaboration. So in the past, we were able to seize a large amount of illicit cigarettes. Now for two consecutive years, we, the tobacco duties were raised. So we redistribute our manpower and engage in law enforcement more in urban areas. So we would step up patrol on the streets. For example, we will see whether newspaper stand or stores are selling cigarettes of dubious sources. Concerning the situation of cheap whites, we will step up enforcement action to achieve more results. Next, Ms. Reng Kong. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up my own question. Reply, zero six zero and sixty one. Well, maybe the official who answered the question didn't know that both questions came from me. The two answers are exactly the same. I can't really spot the difference. My question has not been answered. The government expenditure is ever on the rise. How can we slow that down? I'm asking about the plan for the future. The official is telling me that one percent will be cut from the recurrent expenditure each year, but that is just a drop in the bucket. The government expenditure is getting bulkier by the year. So besides the one percent cut, are there other measures? Now my second question in reply, zero sixty one, I ask whether this approach is too conservative. Secretary, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Reng Kong for your question. A philosophy in handling public expenditure is clear, that is expenditure within the limits of revenues. We don't have a magic hand. We have to ensure that our spending is kept within the limits of our income. So we have sped up the cost-cutting regime. We will implement the one percent percent cut for several years. There is a balance to be struck though. We must maintain the health of our public finance, on the other hand, avoiding impacts on people's livelihood. For major development projects or capital works projects, bureaus and departments will be more careful in considering the benefits and necessity of such projects. We require bureaus and departments to submit a report to us concerning the return pertaining to a certain capital works project. It may not be in monetary term. Social benefits can also be a benefit. So in considering whether to take forward a capital works project, we will make sure that bureaus and departments have considered the return of the project, including social return. Now the Treasury or the government is the main responsibility holder in maintaining the budget. However, bureaus and departments must also be aware of the cost effectiveness of the projects. So in terms of our internal workflow and mechanism, we have been enhancing them. Now, second question. The money comes from our own economy. We must make sure that the economy is thriving and there are vibrant economic activities, and then we can have sufficient tax revenues to support our expenditure. In the past, Hong Kong has been a very good place for doing business. For example, profit tax, each year we receive some one hundred billion dollars in terms of profit tax. So like Mr. Xia Ba-Lung said yesterday, Hong Kong is a good place to do business. The question is how we can utilize our advantages to combine and a highly effective market with a capable government. Thank you.
Next, Dr. Wendy Hong. Thank you, Chair. Oh, sorry, my question relates to zero six four and zero six. We can see that the four percent growth in the GDP, but we have a six point eight percent increase in the expenditure. We have increase in various aspects of expenditure, including education and healthcare. All of these cause a great burden on the economy and the fiscal situation. So I think we should really review the three major aspects, welfare, education, and healthcare. For education, it's three point five percent. Healthcare, it is a significant percentage as well. Welfare, it's similar. I want to ask why the government has reached an estimate of two point two percent as said here. We have significant increases in the three major aspects, so essentially it would be too, it would not be able to cover what we have. So I want to ask the secretary, can you tell us the basis of your estimate? My next question is on debts owed by the government. We have one point five billion debts to pay, and that's zero point one percent of the GDP. But now we have it accounting for six point five percent, close to two hundred billion dollars. And in the next few years, it can grow as high as accounting for thirteen point two percent of the GDP. Has the government considered imposing a cap on a debt to GDP ratio? Thank you. Let me first answer the second question. I'll let my colleague answer the first question. For example, in the U S, they have a very, very high debt to GDP ratio. It may be multiples of the GDP. And back then, when they only had seventy percent debts to GDP ratio, they were already quite worried, but they got used to it. So with an economy, with regard to different indicators, it would just act as a reference. We need to make sure we are practicing prudent finances, but then we should also consider issuing debts for the benefit of the economy. All we have to do is to strike a balance here. We need to consider several factors. One, we need to have a mechanism in place. We shouldn't just let it balloon. So you can have a cap, but it has to be agreed by council members, and if we have a cap that is agreed by council members, that would essentially already act as a check and balance. And next is on how much debt should we issue? As said, compared to other advanced economies, we have a relatively low debt to GDP ratio. Also, with the issuing of bonds, what we're trying to achieve here is for the benefit of Hong Kong. In the U S, it is different because they are issuing bonds to cover recurrent expenditure, and that's why the bill did not pass in their Senate, which is why it is very different, as I emphasize here in Hong Kong, for the situation here. And the issuance of bonds, one factor that we have to consider is the debt to GDP ratio, but we also have to consider other factors. As said, we already have eleven to twelve months of government expenditure in the surplus of the operating account. We believe we should be able to cover the needed expenditure. And in doing so, we should also consider the future development of Hong Kong. You may ask why we have a lower ratio after that. It is because we have taken into account our projections. We will have more accurate projections as we come closer in time. Thank you. Chair, Mr. Kenneth Fok. Thank you. I want to ask about zero eight six. It is a question asked by Mr. Paul Tsai. With the productivity enhancement program, we will cut government expenditure, recurrent expenditure by another one percent. Some members asked if this is enough. Let me first ask, is it the case that for every single department, there will be a one percent cut in expenditure? Different governments have different functions. Should different targets be implemented in different departments? I also want to ask about more sources of government revenue to be explored. Last week, we talked about how to make better use of non-financial assets of Hong Kong. We have many non-financial assets in Hong Kong. If we can better manage them, I believe we can generate more revenue from them. Right now for LCSD venues, there are no incentives for the LS, LCSD to be thinking out of the box and try to generate revenue for the government. Should we explore more sources of revenue for Hong Kong? They do not have the incentive because they will not be able to retain the funds. The funds will go to the Treasury. But let's think about how we can do better. Thank you. Yes, Dr. Kennedy Wong has moved a motion last week on how to better use financial assets in the council. All right. Thank you. The administration, please. With the productivity enhancement program, it was asked whether it's the case that all departments would have to make a one percent cut in expenditure. The simple answer is that we have an operating expenditure envelope approach and for every bureau. By the middle of each year, we have already allocated resources to the relevant bureaus, and we have already cut one percent from that figure. So the target of a one percent cut in expenditure will most definitely be achieved. The envelope approach matters in the sense that for every bureau, they will still have the flexibility of deploying resources to where they think fit, depending on the importance of the functions. We believe maintaining flexibility is very important for bureaus and departments work. The second question relates to the usage of assets, whether we can encourage departments to try to generate revenue from assets that they maintain. If we can recover the costs of certain assets or as the member said, whether the LCSD can do more with their resources. We have a principle here for resources that are not relevant to people's livelihood. Of course, we will try to just maintain the level of service provision, whereas if there are users for the particular resources, we will make sure that we implement a users pay principle. But then we think it is also very important to make sure the fact that some departments are simply unable to make a revenue that is just the part of their portfolio that matters. Well, I think the administration can just keep this in mind when they can. Thank you. Next, Mr. Edmund Wong.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to first follow up on my question, oh three three and oh three four. One relates to the personal tax return. I can see that it's just a five point eight five percent increase in the number of people making use of electronic filing. We still have a significant number of people making use of paper filing. That is not ideal. So with more arrangements implemented, how many costs can be saved by the inland revenue department with people switching to electronic filing? Will you provide incentives to citizens to switch to electronic filing? For another aspect, it's actually even lower of the rate of adoption of electronic filing. And we have a significant cost for that, three million dollars for profit tax. And that's not very cost effective. I want to know what the administration thinks about this. Next, on oh four oh, minimum tax and global, sorry, global minimum tax and minimum top-up tax. With administrative arrangements implemented, we should still have a relatively attractive tax regime. We can't help but implement these arrangements, but starting from twenty twenty two, we have thirteen thousand companies going into the winding up proceedings. In the first quarter of this year, we have twenty thousand odd companies. I am hoping these are just companies that are not in operations or are just cancelling their business registrations. But I hope that you should understand that for industries, they are facing many difficulties due to the poor economy. Will there be policy support for these companies? And on oh nine oh, family offices. I can see that there are other figures. There are approximately twenty seven thousand family offices in Hong Kong. The family offices do not require any registration. So these are just So these are just estimates or projections. But from Invest Hong Kong's fixture figures, there are six hundred and fifty family offices that have inquired with them. And some have formed family offices from them uh through their assistance. Of course, we have professionals helping them. That's good. But then in Singapore, family offices would have to be registered. So I want to ask, without registration, is it the case that the administration has difficulties helping family offices because they do not even know about the family office's existence? Well, you have used almost three minutes to speak. I'll let the administration pick one question to answer and follow up on the other questions. I will give you less than one minute to answer the question.
I will briefly answer the third question on how we come up with the number of family offices set up in Hong Kong. In the budget, the government made a pledge that by two thousand twenty five, there should be two hundred more family offices in Hong Kong. We are confident to achieve that. We have the Invest Hong Kong team. We do have a record on assistance provided to interested family offices. So some family offices came to Hong Kong without seeking help from the Invest Hong Kong because our professional services sector is so vibrant. So please give him the supplement reply after the meeting. Mr. Shanghai Long, thank you. Two questions. Reply fifty five on the government's procurement or pro innovation procurement. According to the reply, now the departments would adopt the fair trade principle implemented by the WTO. Now, the RTIP in procuring INT products, um locally developed INT products, the percentage is ninety percent. For Defense Bureau, procurements of local construction consultancies and construction companies, eighty five percent. So what explains the difference? Can we ask other bureaus and departments to support our local INT products? Reply zero one five, how the government is raising revenue. Now, Mr. Adrian Hall asked a question about the car parks in the government's joint users office, a joint users building. What is the usage rate of the car parks there? In Shatin and Shamshui Po, now at non-peak hours, the usage rate is only twelve percent. Now, you know how hard it is to get a parking space in Shatin. Now, in Shamshui Po, there are two hundred parking spaces in the joint users building, but the usage rate is only twenty five percent. How can we utilize, maximize utilization of the parking resources in government joint uses buildings in urban areas? This will help alleviate the shortage of parking spaces overnight. Two questions, Secretary. I would first invite um Ms. Margaret Xie, Deputy Secretary, to answer the question. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Secretary. Concerning the government's procurement policy, as mentioned in the reply, we are a signing party of the WTO Convention. So we have to ensure that the procurement is conducted under transparency and fairness principles. Now, we welcome local enterprises to submit tender to us as well. Now, besides the two bureaus mentioned in the reply, let me share with you some other information concerning the DOJ for brief out legal services in the past two fiscal years. Ninety per- ninety seven percent of briefed out cases to mediators, arbitrators and other legal services were procured locally. For the EPD, the procurement percentage of from local enterprises accounts for ninety six percent. Now, the government's logistic logistics department is the central procuring unit, and the percentage of local procurement is eighty percent. What about the second question? Government Property Agency and Mr. Feng about parking spaces. Concerning the parking spaces in the government's joint users building, it is for used by government departments and public offices when there are surplus, especially after working hours and during public holidays. Having considered a number of factors, we would release the parking spaces for the public with a charge. Now, we would engage a third party to operate the service on a cost recovery basis. Now, the contractor would operate the car parks according to markets or commercial principles. Now, besides the availability of parking spaces, it also depends on the location of the car parks, the number of parking spaces available as well as the parking demand at that particular hours. Now, based on commercial principle, the operator would make sure that there is a high utilization rate for the car park under its management. A follow up question, please just very briefly. I would like the government to provide to me the percentage of local procurements by other bureaus or departments. The government will reach out to you after the meeting. The last member, Mr. Benson Look. Reply twenty three, that's my own question. Now, we need to be aware of the fiscal health. That is natural, but it seems that the government is having difficulty in tax recovery. Now, as I said, the twenty ninth of February this year, the accumulated number of tax return unpaid amounted to two hundred and forty thousand, and the amounts unpaid amounted to some twenty four billion dollars according to the building construction cost of three T four roads. Now, for surcharge paid to cases, the number of cases have increased as well. Now, in two thousand nineteen, there were some seventy thousand. Now, the number has tripled to one hundred ninety nine thousand cases in last year. So my question is, what is the government's interpretation on this situation? I mean, delay in paying tax. There is some twenty billion dollars in arrears. So how can we translate that into government's revenue? I believe the Hong Kong public is law abiding, but the economy is poor. So people were left out of option. Now, the amounts of arrear accounts for a high percentage in salary tax. So how can we help these people pay the tax? Inland Revenue Department. Thank you. The number of cases in arrear is packed with our economic situation. Now, concerning the statistic dated twenty ninth of February two thousand twenty four, that is not a record high. In March two thousand twenty one, the number of tax returns unpaid amounted to two hundred sixty three thousand. The number climbed back down gradually and then rose again. So we don't have to be particularly bothered concerning the statistic on a certain day. But tax recovery is our work. We will deliver it diligently. Now, some cases have some cases are in arrear for many years, so the accumulated amount is higher. We will exhaust all powers given to us under the law to recover tax, including imposing a surcharge to remind taxpayers to pay up. And also, we may charge the tax from a third party, for example, the employers or the banks. We will also prosecute cases so as to recover tax. For extreme cases, we may even apply for an order to ban the person in question from leaving Hong Kong. So of course, we have a number of measures to help taxpayers pay the tax. We have an installment payments arrangement. When the taxpayers have genuine financial difficulties, they may apply for payments in installment. When the economy was poor, the IRD has offered installment payments with no interest requirements. Now, that concludes this quest- this session. The next session will begin at five thirty five, same room. Thank you.